Mechanism for us to enforce a noise ordinance, whether it's decibels, it doesn't matter. A duck quacking in the pond that's driving someone crazy. Not, we're not going to go do the knock on, I mean, it essentially comes back to the individual who is having the issue. Having to go knock on a door and say, this is egregious.
Yeah.
This is causing me harm, this is causing my dog's harm, I have PTSD, whatever, very real, or it's just annoying. It doesn't negate the, the truth of it being
Sure.
a problem, but.
You know, as it, as it relates to that cannon, disorderly conduct, a person is guilty of disorderly conduct if making loud and unreasonable noises. Yeah. Walla County can definitely enforce that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I feel that it's just the avenue that the, that who the person with the complaint takes.
It feels good to say, we need to have a noise ordinance, but it, but it's a toothless.
Yeah.
Instrument.
Yeah, and it's, it's a, it's a, I'm not sure the right, the right term, but it's, it's a, it's not the right tool for the job.
Right.
Right? Someone firing cannon, the disorderly conduct ordinance, I think is actually the perfect ordinance to enforce that because
Yeah.
it's just a common sense thing, you know, should you be, should you be lighting off a cannon at nine thirty?
No.
And, and, and multiple times,
Yeah.
you know, bothering dozens and dozens of people.
Yeah.
Apparently you could hear it from Hope.
Oh, you can hear it at my house.
I missed it. I missed it. I can't.
Yeah.
It was something.
You know, and it's one of those things where you stop and take notice and so whatever intent the individual had behind that activity. But I would be remiss to ask this board or our voters to consider adding an ordinance in that, we just have no mechanism.
Yeah, yeah, I was, uh, I was, I, I watched, uh, the select board try to deal with this issue back whenever that was. And it was insoluble. Uh, Terry Gibbs was the town attorney at the time. And he just basically flat out said, and Terry wasn't the most straight ahead speaker, uh, he flat out said, hey, you guys can't do anything. Uh, because it had, apparently, I mean, you can't, you can't come up with a number that's gonna work.
Right.
And you can't measure it.
No.
What are you gonna give everybody else, you know, some pressure level meters?
Right, you're gonna hire an individual to be on salary to
Right, and so it was just.
monitor this stuff?
It wasn't enforceable, and it would just be nothing but, you know, lawsuit after lawsuit after, you know, so.
So, you know, I, I heard you when you said you wanted to table it, we had a discussion anyway.
I understand, yeah.
Um, but, you know, I, I totally appreciate that there may have been a crossed wire and, um, Jordan not being here, you know.
Yeah.
How are in-person meetings versus virtual meetings, but, um, I mean, I don't, he wasn't able to be here tonight and that is his prerogative, but I don't see the need to have this conversation again. I just, I, I don't see, I don't think it's a viable conversation.
Well, no, I, I, I agree, it's really a non-starter, it's a non-starter as an issue, but, uh, I just wanted to give him the benefit of the doubt.
Sure.
See if he has anything.
Sure.
But I, yeah, I agree too, I, well, especially about a new ordinance. Uh, I just wonder if, if there's anything we wanna do as a town. I don't know, issue a statement saying, if you see something, say something, or just, I don't know, if, if it's worth doing anything, maybe this person will stop firing their cannon and it'll go away.
Well, fortunately, in this circumstance, um, after receiving a number of complaints and actually figuring out where it was.
Yeah.
I talked to the property owner, who talked to the tenant, and they're in the process of selling the property and the tenant has now vacated the property.
Oh, okay.
So hopefully they picked up their
Okay.
weapon, weaponry, taking it with them. I don't know where they've gone, and it may be a temporary solution, but it's a, but that was to this, that specific
Sure.
instance, and I don't know if Selectman Barnett Parker had a greater, or a, you know, a future vision.
And certainly if he does, he's more than.
He'd naturally be on the gender.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely, but I think it would be incumbent upon all of us to encourage anyone that has a problem with your neighbor to talk to your neighbor first.
Yeah.
You know, don't necessarily
Downline them.
farm it out to the municipal officials to have to do it. Um, okay, thank you all. Uh, moving along, uh, we have our annual appointment, um, of municipal officials as the town charter requires within thirty days to the practical extent within our, um, annual town meeting that was held by referendum. Uh, and so I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board appoint the individuals listed to the positions shown on the sheet entitled Town Official Appointment Papers and dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, with all terms being one year.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Do you have something?
Um, I did just wanna note that, um, you'll know on there that we don't have a road commissioner or won't at the end of the month.
Yes.
We may need to have some additional follow-up on that
Yes.
next time.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, and in the similar, uh, tack, we also are under the same obligation for all boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, and so I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board appoint the committee members requesting reappointment to the positions and terms set forth on the expiring committee terms list dated six, ten, twenty-one and included within our meeting packet.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? Nothing, all of those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have received bids for the surplus equipment, uh, or the equipment that we deemed surplus in the town. Voters, uh, empowered us to, um, dispose of as we saw fit, and so we have um, a few bids, uh, for both, for the John Deere tractor, uh, the compressor, and the skid tank, no bids were received for the floats. Um, so as such, I will entertain motions. A first motion, please.
I move that the board accept the ten thousand five hundred and five dollar offer from Roland Ray for the purchase of the John Deere lawn tractor.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Uh, second motion, please.
Uh, I moved that the board accept the one thousand five hundred dollar offer from Dallas Fields for the purchase of the Mako air compressor.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? And a third and final motion, please.
I move that the board accept the one hundred and sixty dollar offer from Dan Ford for the purchase of the skid tank.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and as David noted, uh, we will just keep the floats in storage, um, and we're gonna need to have a conversation about what to do with them.
Yeah, 'cause we, um, we pay rent for this, for the pool storage.
Oh.
Yeah.
Not an excessive amount of rent, but we have three float, floats that are, um, of less than desirable condition, shall we say, they were less than desirable when we took them out of service, um. Can, can anybody on the island use them? Uh, nobody bid, not to say we wouldn't turn it down.
How much is our rent?
I, I don't know off the cuff.
I'm just wondering if it would make sense to kind of mothball them and, you know, the cost of rental versus the cost of, say,
Yeah.
stuffing them in a corner.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, so, uh, yeah, wh- wh- where are these guys stored?
They're in the, the pool at Dark Harbor Cove.
Yeah.
On a mooring.
Oh, okay.
Um, I might try, um, speaking with Kurt at Dark Harbor to see if they know of anybody that might make us any
Any reasonable offer?
Or take them off our hands or
Sure.
I mean, it seems foolish to let them rot further on a mooring while we do nothing, I mean, and pay rent to have them do it, might as well.
Do we have a, a statement of health that we could offer? And, I mean, I know Kurt could speak to that, but it just, you know, for potential persons of interest?
Yeah, no, not really.
Okay.
I'll see what I can find, and if anybody out there is interested in
Some floats.
twelve by thirty? Twelve by twenty, twelve by, we'll figure it out. I don't have that in front of me either, but
Okay.
we shouldn't allow it to linger longer.
Okay, so, to be continued. All right. Uh, moving along, agenda item number sixteen, we have a number of annual renewals to adopt, renew, amend, or rescind of our uh, board policies and procedures, um, and so, starting at the top of the list, we have our rules of procedure, which you have in your packet every meeting, uh, but you have a focused draft of that in your packet, and so I will entertain a motion, please.
I move that the board of selectmen utilize the current rules of procedure, Lincolnville Board of Selectmen for the coming fiscal year.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and we have a policy on the treasurer's disbursement warrants for employee wages and benefits. Can I have a motion?
Move that the board of selectmen approve the policy on treasurer's disbursement of warrants for employee wages and benefits dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much, that is a tongue twister, and we have the treasurer's disbursement warrant of state fees and revenues.
I move that the board approve the policy on treasurer's disbursement warrants for sending revenue collected on behalf of the state to the appropriate state agencies dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and finally, we have the treasurer's disbursement warrant for municipal education costs.
I move that the board approve the policy on treasurer's disbursement warrants for municipal education costs dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And in our housekeeping billet here, we have our, uh, updated contract for working with, um, Fort Halifax, Fort Halifax Appraisals, uh, for the upcoming fiscal year, the current fiscal year, no, upcoming fiscal year. Uh, can I have a motion?
I move that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign the contract for assessing services with Fort Halifax Appraisals for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and we annually are required to enter into an agreement regarding septic waste disposal facilities. Uh, can I have a motion?
I move that the board approve and sign the septic waste disposal facility agreement with Interstate Septic Systems, Inc. in the amount of two thousand three hundred dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and Selectman Garrettson, you requested that the board have a reconsideration of, uh, the decision on, regarding a reopening plan.
Yes, so I think we, we erred, 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 um, when we, when we, um, made a decision at the last meeting to not include any, um, remote component to our board of selectmen meetings. What I'm concerned about solely are board of selectmen meetings, not, not any other committees or, or boards for Lincolnville. Um, I think people now are so used to being able to participate via Zoom, um, that I, I, I think it's, it's important for, um, transparency and for just bringing in as much, um, uh, uh, bring in the public as much as possible to continue that Zoom component. My understanding is, um, regardless of, of the governor's emergency order, um,
Which has been rescinded.
Which has been rescinded, and, and I believe is no longer in effect July thirtieth. Uh, even pre-COVID, you could have a Zoom component where, like, guests could come in and talk to you, but, but people on the board couldn't, couldn't vote remotely. Um, and so, putting aside the selectmen, um, for right now, I think at the very least, uh, uh, to have the ability for, for people we invite to participate remotely, uh, if they can't be here, I think, uh, serves us well. Um, now, obviously, that adds an additional layer of complexity to running our meetings. Um, and I guess the way, the way I envision it, um, if we didn't spend any money at all, we would have the projector on and Zoom would be on there if, if people were participating remotely. And we would have, you know, there'd be a computer in front of David or me or one of us to just operate bringing over someone who we invited to speak to us. Um, if, if we were willing to, to spend money on it, there's something called an owl cam, which is like a thousand dollar camera that rotates depending on who's speaking, it's like voice activated. And so, the people that are participating over Zoom would, would see whoever was speaking here because the owl cam would be like there. Um, this is totally uncharted territory, I don't think any town in, in Maine knows what they're gonna do. Um, especially since the, the governor's emergency order is expiring. Um, but, you know, there's, there's, there's people that, that we invited to participate in this meeting and, and I there's a good chance they would have if, if we had a Zoom component. Um, maybe they just were busy, maybe, we don't know, but, but it just, you know, as we all know, it lowers the bar for participation.
So you're just looking for capability of people presenting to Zoom into our meetings?
So, to me, that's the most important.
Yeah.
Um, but if it's, if it's still legal, I see a lot of value in also letting selectmen participate, um.
Which it won't be.
Which, right, if there's a, you know, if the state legislator passes the law, which they're talking about, it doesn't guarantee that they will be. So from now until that happens, I don't think we should take any action on, on selectmen participating remotely since it's gonna expire July thirtieth, but at the very least, to change our policies so people from the public can participate remotely. I, I mean, we have, when this is working, it's on, you know, it's on YouTube, so I'm not, I'm not concerned about people logging in, needing to log into Zoom to watch us because we have the YouTube component al- already. Um, but it's just about inviting, inviting people, you know, people sometimes chat to us, but, but that's, that's not important because we're not having a two-way conversation.
Yeah, I mean, n- n- none of us should be on our phones or communicating with anyone in the outside world when we're convened as a board anyway.
Yeah, so that's, I'm not concerned about that. Um, so it's, it's, so, do we agree on, on, on adding that component and then, you know, how do we do it?
I mean, for, for me, it's just a non-starter, I'm not inter, I just, I, knowing, knowing the added burden that the Zoom component has been for our town administrator and he has bore that burden gracefully, but I think we reached, not to put words in your mouth, perhaps the end of that rope. That rope has frayed and gone, and I think the timing was very good. Um, I also, I, yeah, I just, I feel very old-fashioned when it comes to this and I feel the same way about town meeting, I really look forward to getting back to the open floor town meeting where we can have, those who vote have a voice, those who show up have a voice. And I think that while in our democracy, we should make every effort to make participation um, accessible to everyone. I think that there is also an element to our democracy and to us doing business as a select board. It's a two-way street of respect, and you sh- show up, if it's important to you, you show up. And so I feel like it's going to be a muscle that we have long let atrophy. And yet, I think that, you know, we, we have an open door policy, um, having an in-person conversation is I, you know, I think our internet conversation with representatives from Axiom was a really great example of having a much richer and dynamic conversation than we ever could have had via Zoom.
Yeah, undoubtedly.
Um, and, you know, particularly when it comes to very controversial issues, um, difficult issues, sad issues, um, that we really haven't had much of amazingly in the last eighteen months, um, but we undoubtedly will, um, having that in-person component, I think is essential, and it will be an adjustment, but I just, I'm just, yeah. So, those are my two cents.
I would really like to see us stay in person. I, I really would, and I know there are some things that dictate us not being able to do that, but I agree with, show up, that's, that's what I want to see us do. I understand what you're saying, um, but I think we need, I, I wanna, I wanna, I want everybody to show up, now that we can.
Yep.
Well, yeah, see, I'm kind of conflicted on this because I, well, I agree with both of you, I think, 'cause democracy is something you have to earn, in a way, you know, um, and participation, and it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be easy, in, in some ways. Uh, the more you pay, the more it's worth and all that stuff, but, um, I think there's gonna be clamoring, and maybe not, I could be totally wrong. There could be a clamoring for people because they've gotten used to just sitting in their chair, turning the, with the remote control, and watching the board of selectmen.
Well, see, that won't change, that's the thing. It's still the same YouTube channel, the same link.
You know, I'm sorry, what I, what I mean to say is, and, or participate, or, or be a participant in the meetings from the safety.
Sure, you could be eating your supper and still participate.
I'm not gonna admit to wearing my pajamas during meetings, okay, but, some people could. I won't name names, you know, but, uh, all I'm, all I'm saying is that, I, I'm thinking, my, my guess is, we're gonna have to deal with this down the road.
Sure.
I, I really do, and, um, uh, so that being said, I mean, I don't have a problem with a, uh, invited guests zooming in. And, uh, we're not gonna, and if we understand that we're not gonna get nearly, we, we probably won't get the same level of conversation, interaction, like, like we could have in person, like we did last night, and, uh,
You know, we could also, it, it could be case by case, right? If we're having a really important conversation, we invite someone who you know, we really would like to hear from, and they're like, hey, I'm, I'm in Florida, I'd love to zoom in, you know.
Yeah, then we schedule it a future, you know, I mean, it's, you know, sort of.
We could work around the schedule, yeah.
I mean, so, I made a statement to Susan Mustapich, who interviewed me about social media, you know, and I feel that, you know, pertinent to the conversation we had tonight, we don't have citizenry and we don't have people that have a hundred percent access digitally to our meetings. And I feel that this necessary reliance on the digital platforms was great as a necessary and good stopgap to an unreasonable situation that the pandemic presented. However, I think it is foolish of us to lean on that too heavily, knowing that we would be excluding the ability of certain members of our community to participate in any other way but the old-fashioned way, which is, you know, getting a ride here or driving themselves, getting themselves here in some way, shape, or form, you know, there're just, there're a lot of different layers.
There are, yeah.
Um, to this conversation, which all for me just keep coming back to, we're here. Talking to an empty room, but we're, you know, we're here and we're available, and I think that, um, offering that opportunity for that two-way street, and if it is truly important to an individual who wishes to do business with us, to recognize that and respect that and offer that same, um, reciprocation. And certainly there have been times in the past where either timing or what have you, you know, we got a statement or we made the accommodation for the individual to just send us an updated diagram that gave us the information we need, but I would like to think that in our very process-heavy process, that that we truly have the opportunity to have the conversation that is needed without ha- without having to create added intricacies into our system to accommodate that.
Okay, I think that's a very fair, fair point. Um, yeah, flexing a muscle, I mean, it's true, when you don't, when you don't do something like face-to-face conversation, it, it suffers.
Yeah, 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 I, I would, I would hate to be part of the wave of this kind of cheapening discussion.
Yeah.
You know, I, I could be, yeah.
And you're right, maybe, maybe we're not gonna hear complaints, but it'll, um, they'll let us know, right?
Yeah, well, certainly, if
I'm sure that they'll let us know.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
I feel like if, yeah, I feel like, I, I would hope that anyone would, if they were, if we had a handful of individuals that felt aggrieved or burdened by, say, you know, if we kept with the decision that we made last week, that we have another conversation about it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and then look at the facts at hand and then make a decision based on that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, selectmen updates, Kern, do you have an update for us?
I got, no. I don't really wish I had something, but I
It's, it's perfectly okay.
I got nothing.
If you did, it was an opportunity, and if you don't, that, that's not a negative against you, you don't get a demerit.
Sorry, I've got nothing.
Josh, I know you've given us updates already, but.
I, I do regarding Mako solid, solid waste, uh, uh, or, I'm, I'm blanking on the date, on the
Oh.
the, uh, hazardous disposal.
Oh, nineteenth.
We've got that in this, so.
Yeah, so, so everyone out there, June nineteenth is our
Household hazardous.
Household hazardous waste day at our transfer station, um, so bring your, I have a whole bunch, I always save it up and then I miss it.
Batteries?
June nineteenth.
Teen, yeah.
Printer cartridges?
Biggest one.
Write down.
Trying to think what else.
It's elect, is, does that can, include electronic waste?
Twelve, twelve thirty to three.
All trash day.
So, don't forget, if you have hazardous waste, which we probably all do, bring it June nineteenth to our transfer station. Twelve to three, you said?
Three thirty or three? David's gonna get some more details. These are the things, I literally have a stack
Okay.
at my house.
Yeah, okay, Saturday, June nineteenth, twelve thirty to three P M. Um, the fee is ten dollars a unit, five gallons or twenty pounds. Oh, that's for paint, so, yeah, so residents of Camden, Rockport, Hope, and Lincolnville.
Cool. Uh, Mike, do you have an update beyond what you've already shared, okay?
No, I don't have.
And I have nothing to share also. Uh, we have the treasurer and payroll warrants to approve and sign, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve the treasurer's and payroll warrants.
Second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor? And is there any other business that the board wishes to attend to?
This has been really nice.
I
I'm glad we're meeting in the real.
It's really good to see all of your faces.
Yes.
Mike, welcome.
Oh, yeah, this is my first, yeah, yeah, there was a workshop a year ago, wasn't there?
I think, I think you get an award for being the first selectman to be a year into it and not having been in a, in person meeting.
First in-person meeting, elected on June twenty.
Yeah, 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 June, yeah, because actually I was getting, uh, I was getting signatures, you know, for nomination papers when the V lockdown
Yeah.
came, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, see what you've missed?
Oh, I know, I know.
See, isn't this great?
I, I, no, there was a, um, workshop, uh, that we had.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, with that, I will entertain a final motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? You all, we returned.
Don't go home.
And so the fun part about being here is that we get to sign things.
Get it over with now.
Oh, good. So don't put your pens away.